Good morning, Councilman Ahmad came with Public Works. So this morning, we have a team from City of Ridgefield. They would like to discuss some options of roadway alignment west of I-5. A lot of these concepts that they're going to share will be within the county. So they'd like to go over that and get your consensus and questions you might have about that concept. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg Jellison, who is the consultant for the City of Ridgefield, and he's going to be leading the presentation, and I'll ask him to introduce his team. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg Jellison.
Okay, thank you, Ahmad. So hello, and thanks for inviting me today to talk about the I-5 South Connection Project. My name's Greg Jellison. I'm the principal engineer for PBS Engineering and Environmental. It's a local engineering firm here in Vancouver. I'm also the senior project manager for the I-5 South Connection Project. With me today are Judith Perez, a senior transportation planner with PBS, and then Brian Cast, City of Ridgefield Public Works Director, and Steve Stewart, city manager for the City of Ridgefield. Just note about Steve. So prior to joining the City of Ridgefield seven years ago, Steve worked at the state, regional, and local level. And Steve served as a Clark County Commissioner here for 10 years and was a county commissioner when the concept of the I-5 South Connection Project was added to the county comprehensive plan in arterial Alice. So next slide, please. So the City of Ridgefield received Washington legislative funds to conduct a corridor planning study for the Interstate 5 South Connection Project. And through this study, we are identifying possible alignments for a future connection between the City of Ridgefield and the Hillhurst Road 31st Avenue region and I-5 at the existing 219th Street or SR502 interchange. And in hopes that that will improve regional travel reliability within the study area. This proposed roadway is on both Clark County and the City of Ridgefield's comprehensive plans. But with a sizable portion of this alignment is being located outside of Ridgefield's urban growth area. The city is leading the project and is partnering with Clark County and the Washington State Department of Transportation. So why are we doing this study? The goals of the project include the following: to reduce travel demand at the Pioneer Street or Exit 14 and at Northeast 179th Street, Exit 9, interchanges with I-5; also to find a route to provide that east-west connectivity between I-5 and the Hillhurst Road 31st Avenue region that meets the requirements of the Growth Management Act and county planning; and also to develop a conceptual connection to the existing SR502 interchange with I-5 that is approvable by WashDOT; and of course, to develop a conceptual plan that can be used to pursue funding for design right-of-way and construction. Next slide, please. So when we started this study, our traffic analysis for a 20-year horizon was focused primarily on what improvements in traffic capacity would be gained at the existing Pioneer Street interchange. So as you know, Ridgefield is growing quickly, and it's only one primary access point to I-5 that serves the city. What we discovered was that the new I-5 South Connection would provide a region-wide dispersment of the trips on the overall traffic network, which means that it not only has benefits for the Pioneer Street interchange at Exit 14, but also benefits Exit 9 at Northeast 179th Street. In fact, the current analysis at 179th Street is being prepared for the county by DKS, shows that this connection is necessary for the future interchange improvements at 179th Street to operate adequately all the way to the design year. Therefore, the construction of a connection between Hillhurst and I-5 will provide regional benefits to those who reside in North Clark County. The regional context and importance of this project should open the door to funding opportunities for regionally significant transportation facilities. So with that analysis, the proposed connection improved operations along the 179th Street corridor, with the most significant improvements being those trips coming from Southern Ridgefield, who currently use county roads such as Delphel to access 179th and I-5. And on the graphic here shown, you can see the white lines are the traffic movements that would benefit the most. And this graphic would show that it shows the new alignment over the proposed future alignment of Delphel with the new interchange that is being planned. So next slide, please. So the corridor planning study area is shown on this slide. The area is bounded by Hillhurst and 31st Avenue to the west, I-5 to the east, Carty Road to the north, and 219th Street to the south. The planning study includes the following elements: an analysis of traffic impacts due to new connection, analysis of environmental impacts, review of topographic constraints, development of conceptual alignments, identification of anticipated right-of-way needs, and then of course, community and stakeholder outreach. Next slide, please. So the project was included in 2007 on the Clark County Growth Management Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and Ridgefield's Comprehensive Plan. And that was Ordinance ORD 2006-12-30, and that was signed in December of 2006 by the Board of County Commissioners. It amended at that time the 20-year comprehensive plan through the 2006 annual reviews and docket. In 2008, WashDOT completed construction of the interchange at I-5 SR502. And then in 2019, the City of Ridgefield received Washington legislative funds through the House Bill 2322 to conduct this corridor and planning study. In spring of 2020, PBS was selected by the city for the I-5 South Connection Corridor Study. And the outreach process started in 2020 with stakeholders' interviews and concluded with a virtual open house in the March-April timeframe of this year. The city will be seeking funds to design and permit the proposed concept, and it is likely that the earliest that construction could begin would be 2026 due to the overall time it takes to get environmental permitting approval and perform right-of-way acquisition. So that would be at the earliest if we started right now. Next slide, please. The City of Ridgefield and the project team engaged the community about the project using a variety of tools and platforms such as Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, and Instagram, but also accessed Ridgefield mobile app and a virtual open house via the Ridgefield Roundtable. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the project team used to create a virtual outreach process to reach out to Ridgefield and county residents. Next slide, please. So in the summer of 2020, the project team was considering the first six connection options of those being presented today. For this reason, the 12 property owners of parcels that could be potentially directly impacted by one of those six alignments were contacted by mail, inviting them to participate in stakeholder interviews. We heard back from eight of those property owners, and they participated in interviews which are reflected in the property owner stakeholder summary, which is on the project website. The interviewers posed a series of 10 questions seeking to understand individual and community perspectives and provided the interviewees with an opportunity to ask questions about the project. Most of the stakeholders interviewed had a strong connection to their properties, obviously. And often, it was because of multi-generational ties. So for those eight that were interviewed, their primary concerns were related to noise and air quality impacts and a desire to not have their property split by a new roadway. Subsequent to a city council presentation on January 28th of this year, an additional route alternative to the north, providing an improved connection to Carty Road was also evaluated. Therefore, postcard invitations to the online open house were sent to another 37 residents within the project area, which now includes this northern alignment where the purple connection is shown. And you'll see what I mean when I get to the purple connection on the map. You'll see what the colors mean. So in addition to the private property stakeholder interviews, we also have had agency coordination meetings with Clark County and WashDOT staff, who are also major stakeholders in the project. Next slide, please. So a virtual open house was hosted from March 8th to April 5th of this year. And the statistics on that were that there were 3,380 total visits to the site. And when they asked, when asked how they currently access I-5, 51% of participants use 179th Street to access I-5. 39% use Pioneer Street or SR501. And then the remaining 10% use other local roads. Participants were asked if they would use a new connection to I-5, and 58% said they would. 19% said they would not, and 23% weren't sure. There were 30 questions posted by 14 different individuals. And most of those questions focused on private property impacts and also a desire to create additional access to I-5 via Carty Road instead of this new connection. 33 people provided comments with 84 marks on the map tool. There was a map tool in the virtual open house that allowed people to comment that way. And a majority of those comments pertain to impacts to private property, and they were closely followed with a desire to create access to I-5 via Carty Road. The project team received eight emails separate from those comments. The project team received eight emails and letters from community members, and their main concerns were regarding the impacts to resource lands. Next slide, please. So here we show the preliminary route concepts. And this map shows the seven different alignment alternatives we were reviewing for the connection from Hillhurst Road to I-5. We've laid all of these out to best fit the constraints found in our investigation of the project area related to the environment, cultural resources, property impacts, and topographic challenges. As part of the virtual open house discussed in the previous slide, there was also an opportunity to participate in an online survey. 151 people participated in that survey and ranked the seven alternatives shown here as follows. The top alternative that was chosen was the pink route, followed by blue, orange, green, red, purple, and yellow. Participants mentioned that the pink, blue, and orange concept routes were preferred in their comments. So on the map that's shown on this slide, there are various colors and patterns that also represent some of the constraints in the area of the project. There's wetlands and oak woodlands. There's existing water bodies. There are steep slope areas and ravines. And there's known historic resources that have been previously identified. There's also a few historic structures. The seven different alignments share various segments with each other and have various advantages and disadvantages. And we are finishing up our review of those advantages and disadvantages and comparing these alignments to each other regarding their ability to beat the basic transportation network circulation needs and meet the goals of the project. Also, how do they fit the existing terrain? Do they split properties or go down property lines? How do they cross the ravines? Proximity to homes or direct impacts to homes? Potential for noise impacts to the existing private properties? Impact to historic structures, wetland, other environmental impacts, and also cost? So on these seven preliminary route concepts, there are a few items that all of the alternatives will have in common. So all of the alternatives will need to cross the north-south ravine and stream with a bridge. There's a major one right in the middle of the site here that all of them will have to cross. Some crossing location options are more desirable than others depending on the width of the specific crossing and the grades or steepness of the slopes in that vicinity. The intersection of the various alignment options with the existing northwest 11th Avenue is likely to be a two-way stop controlled with 11th Avenue having stop signs on it. And that would be wherever, depending on what alignment was chosen, that intersection would be at different locations along that 11th Avenue alignment. There's also three roundabouts proposed with the various alternatives. There's two shown on this map. And there's a roundabout connection at Hillhurst or 31st Avenue, depending on where that connects. And then there's two roundabouts at I-5 and SR502 interchange, one on the east side and one on the west side. The eastern, just so you understand, the easternmost roundabout is an intersection improvement on the current stop-controlled intersection, of course. And that's at the northbound off-ramp-on-rap intersection. And it would be required regardless of what alignment option is chosen due to changes in traffic patterns. So I'm going to walk through real quickly here just a brief explanation of each of the alternatives. So for the pink connection, it's the shortest and most direct route. It avoids steep land. It does not cross additional ravines. And it has no direct structure impacts and extensively follows existing property lines. The blue connection substantially follows the pink connection, but is slightly longer. It has no direct residential structure impacts. It does impact one non-residential structure. And it goes north of the residential properties that are impacted west of 11th Avenue by the pink connection. It does impact an additional steep ravine there between the freeway and 11th Avenue at the headwater of that. The orange connection follows the pink connection, but diverges to the south to have no direct impact on residential structures and provide as much distance as possible from nearby residences. It does result in a slightly longer route. It avoids steep land and does not cross any additional ravines. The yellow connection, and this doesn't show it, but including improvements on 31st Avenue to get all the way back up to Hillhurst Road, this option is the longest and least direct route. It uses a portion of the existing roadway on 219th Street, but is a more winding path to I-5. It has no direct impact to private and historic structures, but it does have greater environmental impacts because it crosses the main ravine and stream directly below an earth dam and water body. So the green connection is basically the same as the pink connection, but follows the property line westerly out of there to northwest 31st Avenue. So it goes directly to 31st, thus creating an offset intersection along 31st Avenue. It's slightly longer than most of the other options. On the red connection, it almost exactly matches the pink connection, but is offset to the south for about 1,500 feet to avoid filling the headwater of the second unnamed tributary of G Creek. This has a greater impact on the historic home and historic property, which is the neighboring farm indicated by the red circle there. It is the second shortest and most direct route and avoids steep land. It does not cross additional ravines, and it has the least environmental impact. And then finally, the purple connection, which is the new one that was added last, it creates an indirect route to I-5 using the existing Eklund Road and 11th Avenue roadways to connect to northwest Carty Road. And Carty Road is a future city project, which will be improved as a separate city project. To meet rural arterial standards, multiple curves would be redesigned and the intersection at Eklund and Carty would be improved. And private property would need to be acquired on either side of the roadway. So let's go on to next steps. Next slide, please. The next step is we're going to be presenting a final summary and report to City of Ridgefield City of Council at some point here, likely by the end of June. And this will include a recommendation to the city regarding one or more preferred alternatives. Next slide, please. So beyond this study, there are additional steps that will need to be taken. The project team is going to be working with city staff to develop scope, schedule, and budget for design phase for the project, assist with securing design funds, initiate and complete the access break approval efforts with WashDOT and the freeway traffic analysis that be required by WashDOT and federal highways. And then assist the city in the collaboration with Clark County to develop an agreed-upon process that outlines future roles and responsibilities for the city to design the proposed road to connect with I-5 and the SR502 interchange. Then of course, we'd like to request your assistance in identifying an agreed-upon methodology to memorialize the roles and responsibilities for the remainder of this project. So at this point, I'll turn it back over to the county council. And our team is here to answer any questions you have about the presentation about the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Counselor Man.
So Greg, with the 12 properties directly impacted and only eight responding to the letter, were any other steps taken to contact those other four property owners? Personal service, knock on the door?
Yeah, I believe. Yeah, no, I believe the WSP was doing the public outreach at the time. I do believe they sent mail, they tried to call, they gathered the data they could to get them. But sometimes you just can't get people to respond. And obviously, depending on the alignment, not all of them are going to be directly impacted. But those were the potentially directly impacted ones in that initial outreach.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is obviously, whether we're looking at a new corridor going over the Columbia River or elsewhere, you know, building corridors and getting rights of way, you know, the least favorable outcome is condemnation proceedings, most expensive, time-consuming, contentious. So whatever reasonable steps can be made, especially once you solidify on the route to contact property owner.
Yeah, no, definitely. We would be in, and like I said, this was very early in the process. We were trying to reach out to just get their thoughts, their concerns, what their, you know, understanding and what they, what questions they might have. And as the project moves forward, there would be definitely more outreach opportunities for all of the property owners.
Other questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Counselor.
Hi Greg, nice to see you again.
Good to see you, Julie.
Hey, you've got some, obviously, some viable options here. And the opportunity to relieve some of this traffic at 179th is really attractive. What, and if you laid this out, I apologize, but what's the process going forward to continue to dial in on which would be the preferred route?
Yeah, I mean, part of the challenge, and Steve, maybe Steve Stewart can answer this a little bit. We've been hampered a little bit because of, of course, the COVID pandemic. And one of the challenges is some of the, our public outreach being virtual, we haven't had the opportunities to be in person. I think we really want to be in person when at all possible to dial this into the final version. But Steve, any comments on that?
Sure, Counselor Olson, to hopefully help address that a little bit. Obviously, any preferred alternative for this project would be a partnership between yourselves at the county council, who have, you know, primary and sole authority for the route selection in the county area. So obviously, you know, you would all be key in that decision-making. WashDOT has really limited their conversation about the preferred route more to the connection with the interstate itself. And so relatively limited since they all kind of start from the same place. And then obviously, a little bit of city council, you know, city council would have a role as well as it connects into the City of Ridgefield. The challenge, as Greg mentioned, is trying to get you all together. Because I know that for our city council, they very much appreciate and value the opportunity to be in person and have face-to-face conversations with you as a county council about the background, the reason, the, you know, why they are advocates for this. As Battleground was an advocate for the 219th interchange in 2000 when they were at about our population. So I think the hope is that we get you all together, that we as staff can work to get you as the decision-makers together to have that discussion before anything gets finalized.
Yeah, thank you. And I mean, I don't think there's, I think the opportunity to have another access to I-5 and again, take some of the pressure off of 179th, even though that's an area we're going to improve. I think the logic is sound, and I would imagine we would be very anxious to work with you on this. So I had another question, but I forgot it.
One additional thing, Counselor Olson, is it, obviously, we can, we will likely dial it in to some, you know, a few different ones that are likely the preferred, you know, options. But to really get it down to which one it's going to be, you'd have to do some additional topographic survey, do some, you know, we've done high-level, you know, of analysis of environmental impacts and what the creek crossings would look like. You'd have to, you have to get more detailed information to really make a final determination of what makes the most sense, right? So there'd be a little bit additional detail work to be done, you know, in a more, maybe a tighter route through there as opposed to this broad view. So that's kind of the next step on that.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Brown.
I was going to ask you, Greg, what, if you would please expand on the council and Clark County's role. And Steve, thank you for doing that a bit already. Is there, are there other areas where you see that Clark County would have a responsibility?
Well, yeah, obviously, we'd be working together. This, most of the alignment is out in the county jurisdiction. So, you know, we're not anywhere near the stage of buying right-of-way. I mean, there's none of those things, or we're not anywhere near that. But obviously, partnering or supporting the city in pursuit of the funding, work, you know, coming up with a methodology as to who's going to be responsible for what as we move forward on the project, working with the team to apply for access to the interchange. So there's various things that are, that would be in partnership with the city, that the county would be doing. It'd be, it's always better to leverage the strength of a partnership in moving forward on these projects.
And how about the funding?
Go ahead, Steve.
No, I'm sorry, Counselor. Go ahead.
I was just thinking, how about the funding? If you could expand on that a bit.
So I can help a little bit with that, Counselor. The City of Ridgefield has placed this on our kind of priority legislative list. We currently have a $5 million ask into the state legislature for $5 million for design funds, designing pre-construction funds associated with this. The project itself is on the regional priorities map put together by RTC. So it is on there as well. And certainly, your staff, public work staff and otherwise, have been incredibly helpful in, you know, in this process so far. And, you know, we look to the experts like them to really help on kind of the technical detail, on the political and getting the funding. We're going to the state. It's also in the hopper with Senator Murray's office because as they're speaking, talking about earmarks potentially coming back, that was one of the requests that City of Ridgefield put in was for that project as well. So if there is a federal infrastructure package, we hope to see some progress with that. And those are the kinds of things that we would love to work with the county council on as well to kind of make sure that we're all walking together on that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, because that last answer really sparked another question for me regarding the connection with the RTC. And would any of these routes be considered a rural road improvement? Because there's, you know, the pot of money for rural improvement grants through RTC are pretty limited from the state. So I'm wondering, how would the road be characterized depending on which route is selected? And whether or not you've been reaching out to the RTC to get this on their priority list?
All of the, all of the routes are rural routes because it's out in rural Clark County. So all of them are classified, they'd be a two-lane, 40-foot, it's the same class. The width would be two 12-foot lanes, two 8-foot paved shoulders. So you'd have 40-foot wide road on the pavement that would be whatever that route would be. And all of those would apply in any of these areas that are still outside the urban growth area, which is virtually all of it. At the various connection points, even on the purple connection, you don't get into the urban area of City of Ridgefield until you get up to that north end.
So. And Counselor, to your specific question about RTC, we've had preliminary conversations with Matt Ransome about the project and potential funding. We have not gotten into specific funding potential because of the stage of design that we are in, because of the stage of kind of pre-design and just initial assessment of alternatives. We have not gone to that level of specificity yet. But it's an excellent thought, and I will make sure I follow up with Matt on that.
You know, thanks for that. I mean, there's three of us that sit on it, and there's really high competition for those rural dollars.
Sure.
Where does Crab come in or does it at all?
Where does what? Crab County Road Administration Board?
Yeah, yeah.
Typically, obviously, they're working directly with the county on rural projects. A lot of them are preservation projects. I personally haven't worked a lot with Crab for a number of years. I worked with Clark County, for Clark County and Kiddatask County early in my career, so had a lot of experience with them back in those days. But that would be more on the county side than where the city has been looking lately, I think. Steve, you probably haven't talked to the County Road Administration Board, have you?
We haven't, but that might be one of the opportunities. I think some of this is going to be who leads the, who makes the ask and who supports the ask. And Crab may be a great opportunity for us to support the ask that would inevitably have to come through the county to be able to go through Crab. So as we're getting, I think, as we're starting to put together, how would we put together a funding package for construction on it? I think that those will be really important conversations to figure out, all right, what are our options? Who takes the lead on the application? And who's following on the application depending on which funding source?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, does this conclude your presentation?
Yeah, unless you have any other questions. I guess the only last thing is this, you know, you know, Steve obviously has a strong connection to the county and to this project has been for a long time, and I actually do as well. And I've been working in southwest Washington as a consultant for 25 years and as an engineer for 33 years. And I actually lived in Ridgefield off Hillhurst Road for 16 years. So I do know, I'm not a consultant from, you know, out of town coming in to tell you what you should do. I've driven all these roads personally. So I know Julie was in the school district there, and I lived right next to the high school. So I know these roads well and understand the challenges and know the people. So it's, it's, it's an important project for the county and for the community, so.
Yeah, I can imagine. It is helpful that you know and understand those roads there.
Oh, yeah, I've driven them all.
Yeah, yeah. But this is certainly a necessary project, so. If there are no other concluding questions or comments, I will thank the presenters. Thank you so much, and we look forward to moving, moving ahead on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, so um leaving that work session, do we?